Eighteenth meeting of Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three Commissioners and ask Judge Kelly Wall to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. As everyone knows, we had our primary election this Tuesday on May 16th. And as always, I want to give a thank you to all the people who helped make our free, fair, and safe elections possible, including our Voter Services staff led by our Director of Elections, Dory Sawyer. We had over 2,570 poll workers, which included 232 high school students as part of the Poll Worker Program who worked a long day on Tuesday, all the ballot counters who processed the over 53,000 mail-in ballots, and the offices of the District Attorney, the Sheriff, Security, Assets and Infrastructure, IT, the Solicitor's Office, and the staff from many other county departments, all of whom helped us administer a successful election. We can't do this without the hundreds of people who sign up and are committed to making sure we have free, fair, and safe elections each and every time. All the results and updates can be seen on our comprehensive Election Results Dashboard on the Voter Services website at www.montco PA.org/voterservices. And Voter Services will continue to update the webpage as eligible ballots pending evaluation are counted. All results are unofficial until certified by the Election Board. And if necessary, on Wednesday, May 24th at 12:00 PM, the Board of Elections will hold a special meeting here in the Commissioners' Boardroom in the event there are challenges to any provisional ballots. So I want to thank everyone who voted as well. Commissioner Winder?
You're so short this week, so you threw me off a little bit. So, good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone that May 21st through the 27th next week is National EMS Week. EMS Week is a time for the community to thank and honor the dedicated medical professionals who provide the day-to-day life-saving services of medicine's frontline. This year's theme is where emergency care begins. When people call 911 to report a medical crisis, emergency medical technicians and paramedics are first on scene to treat patients. They sometimes have to carry patients and heavy medical equipment up and down flights of stairs. I know that firsthand with my parents. So they deal with dangerous environmental conditions and they expose themselves to health risks. All of that is considered a normal day for them. But we know that the work took an even heavier toll on our EMS workers during the COVID-19 pandemic. Their extraordinary, the extraordinary environment in which they've operated during the past three years shows their resilience, dedication, and readiness. Like many other health and first responder professions, there is a crisis-level nationwide shortage of these workers. Nearly one-third of Pennsylvania's EMTs quit in 2021, and it's been a challenge trying to replace them ever since. We are hopeful that the recent additional funding for EMS and fire services in Governor Shapiro's budget will help the staffing in the future. But today, we just want to let our EMS personnel know right now how much we appreciate them. That concludes my comments for today.
Thank you. Commissioner Winder, no comments? All right, we will now move on to announcements. This is National Foster Care Month, and Sandy Baron is here from our Health and Human Services Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Leadership. My name is Sandy Baron, and I am one of the Deputy Administrators at the Office of Children and Youth. I oversee the Resource Division. I am here today in honor of National Foster Care Month. With me today is Bill Carroll, OCY's Community Engagement Manager, Christine Calcagni, OCY Resource Home Supervisor, and Rebecca Weir, OCY's Resource Home Coordinator. We had invited one of our kinship resource families to be with us here today, and unfortunately, they had an emergency with their child and had to cancel, as many families face that every day. Today, Montgomery County, OCY has custody of 188 children who were placed in foster care. At the Office of Children and Youth, we currently have 137 licensed resource families. Fifty of them are kinship families. In addition to our OCY Resource Homes, we work with approximately 20 community-based private agencies that also provide resource homes to children. During National Foster Care Month, we honor the contributions of many people who provide support to children in need of protection. Most importantly, it provides us an opportunity to recognize the compassionate people who make a real and lasting difference in the lives of children, and they are our foster families. This year, we're highlighting, honoring, and recognizing our kinship resource parents. Relatives, godparents, stepparents, or any adult who has a close, family-like relationship with a child can be considered a resource, a kinship foster care provider. The time of placement is very traumatic for both parents and children, and kinship parents can lessen the trauma for that child by being that familiar person and offering that familiar place. There are many benefits to placing children in kinship care, and research has shown that kinship care placements offer stability and safety to the child. In addition, kinship care allows the child to maintain family connections, cultural traditions, and their identity. While kinship care benefits children, the time of placement can be chaotic for the kinship family. Our kinship resource parents are often called upon in the time of a crisis and do not have the benefit of preparation time for the placement. They must make decisions about finances, childcare, work schedules, space in their homes, often within hours. Kinship families are required to go through our home study process, which can sometimes feel very intrusive. Kinship care can also bring some unique challenges to their family dynamics and can alter their family relationships. The kinship family that we invited to be here today expressed their disappointment in missing today's meeting. They are currently caring for their nephew and wanted to speak about how rewarding their experience had been, but also very challenging at times. We would like to express our appreciation for all of our kinship families and for their commitment to making it all work. Thank you.
Sandy, thank you for the presentation and thank you to all our families. So if someone's interested, if there's a family that's interested in doing this, who should they contact?
So they contact Bill Carroll. He is our Community Engagement Manager. There's information on our website. Bill's information is on there as well.
There's also an inquiry form on our OCY website. And when someone fills out that information, it comes to my email directly, so I immediately call them.
Bill, can you come up and give your number and your, and your, and your email, just for the people who are watching?
Yeah, so there is an inquiry form on our OCY website that people can fill out. If you call our main number, 610-278-5800, they can be put right through to me, and I can immediately follow up with them. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for all the work that you and the kinship families do to support our children. So, so thank you for celebrating this month with, with us.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you both as well. Over the years, I've been a strong advocate for adoption and foster care. And I'd like to thank the families that open up their heart and homes to these children in need, but also the staff here in the County Office of Children and Youth for making it all a possibility. So, I value what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Dennis Miller, Director of Veterans Affairs.
Morning. Morning Commissioners, County Leadership, and everybody. Wait. Thanks for having me. I want to give you just an update since Veterans Day. A little bit about the office, and then I'm going to talk about Memorial Day. Since Veterans Day, we completed 566 shuttle sorties, that's a one-way trip, to VA healthcare facilities to provide life-enhancing and life-saving medical care. We gained 939 new clients. We did 866 claims since that time. We are the largest here in Montgomery County, the largest Office of Veteran Affairs in the state. And our calendar year, it was 1,557 claims. The claims are involved. Some people think we just fill out the forms for people, not the case. We provide legal arguments to administrative law judges, work with medical professionals, and develop claims. We did, we had some fun this holiday season. We collected 1,600 holiday greeting cards and distributed them to veterans in long-term care facilities, 52 facilities, many who don't have family. It started out as a local drive. We're looking for like 300 cards, and we're going to do our best. We got cards from all over the country. It was pretty neat. Also, we, with Office of Mental Health, the Sheriff and his department, the VA, Senior Services, and the Police Chiefs Association, we trained 48 Veteran Response Team officers. But, thank you for that soundbite, Memorial Day. Glad to say, we are right at the tail end of distributing 67,000 flags to 30 agencies for our 245 cemeteries. We also are going to place 75 flags on the courthouse lawn right before Memorial Day, and I want to tell you why, because everyone gets a flag. We have 74,741 registered veterans in our grave registry. Some are out of county, so we don't provide flags for them. But some are not interred. They don't have a grave. They're cremated, their ashes were spread. Everybody gets a flag, so that's why we put out the 75 flags as a symbol of that. The other thing is, there are more graves than, veteran graves than we know about. So we do these things called cemetery censuses, and I'm going to leave this very interesting guide, first of its kind, that we created with an Eagle Scout candidate on how to do a cemetery census, to count these graves, how to recognize a veteran's grave, and it's for the organizer and the volunteer. To me, it's fascinating stuff. There's a lot of history. And the, if you do have a veteran and their grave is missed, let us know, because we will give you a flag. We reserve flags, and the Commissioners, you, you give flag holders through us. If they need a flag holder, they can contact us as well. And if you want to get involved for flag planning, we're right in the middle of it, right now, right in the middle of the season, if you will. And if you see on the screen here, we have a cemetery map on our website, which is an ArcGIS map. And you could pick, you could hover over a cemetery in your area, and it'll tell you who the veteran caretaker organization is, and then just contact them and, and see. We're about halfway through, got a couple more weekends. Generally, they don't do flag planning on Memorial Day weekend. The flags are in the ground well before then. And in most cemeteries, they stay all year, all year round. Take care of the, just to end, coming up after Memorial Day in August, we're going to have a back-to-school supply drive with Operation Home Front. Please look for that on social media. And if you want to keep up to date, we have monthly video updates on YouTube, which are either educational or fun, but never both. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Dennis, thank you for the update. I want you to know, just yesterday, I received a letter about you, and it's one of the nicest letters I've ever received about a county employee. And I was actually going to send you a note about that. But I, I don't want to share it because I don't have permission to do so. But I want you to know that your work is appreciated and so much that someone took the time to, to write out a letter about the effort you had made on a family member's behalf of them. So I want to thank you for the update, but I just wanted to acknowledge that as, as well, for what you do year-round.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a great team.
Well, they were talking about you.
Oh, okay.
They were talking, it was, it was specific to you. But I know you have a great team, but they were, they were talking specifically about you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for, for the work you do to support our veterans.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also appreciate the work you do year-round, and displaying these flags means a lot to members of our community that have a military family. And it's nice to see on Memorial Day weekend, especially young families with children out, helping us display those flags. It's very heart-touching, and it means a lot, so keep up the great work.
It's a, it's a civic activity that involves over 1,000 people. It's really nice.
Yes.
Thank you. With me.
All right, this is National Treatment Court Month, and we have Judge Stephen O'Neill here. And I want to acknowledge two other members of the bench here, Kelly Wall, Judge Kelly Wall, and Judge Todd Eisenberg as well. But Judge O'Neill, I, I got a gavel here, so this is...
Brings back a lot of memories, I said, Mr. Stein's chair, a long time ago, back when the earth was still cooling. It feels like right at the turn of the century. So, I know how important it is just to take up valuable time of, of all the Commissioners, and Chair Lawrence, Commissioners Winder and Gale, Mr. Soltizziak, and Mr. Stein. I, I appreciate the time, and I know that we are now, you know, being able to communicate out into our community with these Commissioner meetings. So I do appreciate the time. This is National Treatment Court Month, and I'm here on behalf of the Treatment Courts. I serve as the Administrative Judge of our Treatment Court, and the Presiding Judge in our Drug Treatment Court. I also did a period of time where I was Presiding Judge in the Behavioral Health Court. So, let's click. So, since 2006, when I started the Drug Treatment Court, we have grown here in this county, and none of this is possible without the support of the Commissioners, nothing. Unless the Commissioners and the county government is behind us, then we don't exist. But when I went on the bench in 2002, I quickly began to see that the, about 80% of the population that I was dealing with, they had a substance use disorder. And back in 2002, we thought of a substance use disorder as some sort of a, a moral failing, or bad upbringing, or some kind of, you know, problems that, that really aren't for the justice system, really aren't for the, you know, the leaders, the county leadership to worry about. They just can be incarcerated, and that will stop the retail thefts and the burglaries and these crimes that are symptomatic of a substance use disorder. And I said, there has to be a better way. There has to be another way, because recidivism is a term we know in the criminal justice system that destroys people's lives, destroys family, and costs county government a lot of money to house them in prisons. So I said, there's got to be a better way, and I started to study, you know, beginning in 2004, and I learned about Treatment Courts. And they were kind of still nascent at that time, having started in 1989 in Miami, Florida. They had a huge problem back then. Then it was a cocaine problem in America, crack cocaine problem. And they hit upon the ideas that courts can be a resource, not just a place to simply protect the community from the known symptoms of a substance use disorder, which is criminal behavior. And it had begun to work, and actually Janet Reno, who was a former Attorney General of the United States, she was the, the District Attorney in Miami at the time, and she teamed with and without the support of the District Attorney's Office and the, the Defense Units in counties, then it'd be hard to do this. But they all joined together and said, hold it. Courts can represent something more than just a place that, you know, will host trials, take guilty pleas, and incarcerate people who have a disorder. We wouldn't do that with other relapsing disorders of the body. We don't incarcerate people that maybe don't do their chemotherapy. We don't incarcerate people that don't take their insulin. We don't incarcerate people that aren't listening to their guidelines for, for their heart disease in terms of diet and medication. They're all relapsing disorders of the brain. That's, they're all the same. And the courts hit on the fact that, hold on, we now are, no, we can treat this disease. This is a very treatable disease, a very treatable disorder. This disorder, you know, has risk factors, and they take, you know, hold in early adolescence with our population. As I like to say, you know, in their development, things happen to them that should have never happened to them, and things that should have been happening to them in their development weren't happening. And young in their adolescence, it's usually marijuana, drinking. Not to say they're gateway drugs, but they certainly do. If their other resources aren't there in their lives, therapeutic resources, support resources, things like abuse and, and conflict and abandonment in their lives, it's just a straight shot to the rest of their life. And that's the nature of the disease. It's, it's, we've now learned that it's a learned disorder, if you will. It's a brain disease. It's a system of reward in the brain, and it just destroys lives. So I said it had to be a better way. Studied it, found out the National Association of Drug Court Professionals had started, and they had training. And I did the training. I said, I'm not going to go into this because I don't know. And it's not my job, you know, at this stage to, to, to be the clinician or to be anything other than trying to get a system in this county where we say we care. We care about you. We understand the disease. We understand mental health disorders. We understand what veterans face in this country, and, and we care. And that was a statement when we opened Drug Treatment Court in, in April of 2006. That's the message that I was trying to get across, and it would not happen if the county commission at that stage didn't agree to say, you know what, we don't know much about it either. We know suffering. We can see what it's, it's, it's burden is upon our prison system, but we don't know much about it. And they had to really decide to get behind our Treatment Court movement in this county on, on, on my say-so, when I'm saying, hey, I think it's going to work. And it was with that support, we were able to start Drug Treatment Court. Why don't we pop that screen over there? That picture is actually on one of the days where we had ceremonies here in the courthouse prior to COVID. That, that's what these Treatment Courts do and still hope. So this is Drug Treatment Court. We started in 2006. We've come a long way. I have been here. We just started our 18th year. Just the highlights there, we've been able to increase our capacity to 150. We got there, you know, after COVID decimated it. When we emptied the jails in COVID, the incentives for people to want to change their lives and getting out of jail and starting a Treatment Court started to go. But we are about to have on Tuesday our 170th graduation. We've had, as you'll see in the last little screen, 775 graduates of this program. So many lives changed, so many lives saved, so many drug-free babies born, but more importantly, so many drug-free parents who are there in the lives of their children. So, after we started to go for a while on Drug Treatment Court, that's a long-term program that I'll explain very quickly at the end, because all of our Treatment Courts are modeled on these best practices, evidence-based practices, which I like to call things that work, things that we've studied and things that we've worked. That kind of gave the idea to Judge Smythe in 2000 and, I think, 11, was it? 2011? Next screen, maybe? There, Behavioral Health Court, not 2009. Judge Smythe started to see, and Judge Smythe was the former District Attorney in this county. He saw that, hey, there's something going on over there. What about the mental health population in this county? How do we reach them there in our criminal justice system? Maybe not because of the substance use disorder, but clearly, when someone who has a mental health disorder finds themselves in crisis, that's when we see them break out into our communities where they're intercepted by the police. And the sad part of it is Montgomery County Prison was becoming the largest treatment center for those with mental health, and we weren't given any treatment. We were simply taking them off the streets. And I think he began to see that, that those with serious mental illness need a track in our court system, so they're not forgotten. They're not just incarcerating the symptoms of their disorder. And again, that now is, is modeled on the same thing, lasts about 18 to 24 months. They've had hundreds and hundreds of graduates in that program and, and seriously changed, changed their lives. That then, I know Stephanie Landis and, you know, together with the Behavioral Health in this county, the Office of Behavioral Health, the Office of Mental Health at that time, joined and partnered together. And you could see, as I'll explain at the end, this is all about partnerships, all about collaborations. That quickly then moved on to Veterans Treatment Court, a couple of years later. We saw the issue. They were trending to say, you know what, veterans deserve at least a, a track for themselves, because the veterans have those same mental health, those substance use disorders. And sometimes it's the Veterans Administration aren't there, or they're not trusted to do it. So we partnered with the Veterans Administration in Veterans Treatment Court, and that's the next slide. Over, there we go. And, and we started that in 2011. I know the caricature there. It looks more like our Veterans Court Judge, Judge Eisenberg there. I, I don't think that was after him, but again, that's a program with a capacity of about 30. We've been operating, and again, it's modeled on the best practices of Treatment Court, how to deal with people with mental health and substance use disorders in a system. And then finally, you know, the, the news back in 2016, 2017 was all about the opioid overdose crisis. People were dying at record numbers. That's when, you know, we, we knew what the pill overdose crisis was, as it really just consumed Montgomery County, and people were dying at an alarming rate. And we needed a response, so I gathered together with the Montgomery County Office, I mean, the Adult Probation Office, and again, the great minds that are there, and we said, look, let's make a statement. We went up to Buffalo and studied what they called a targeted opioid phase program. And again, with the support of our Commissioners and the support of the PCCD, we were able to get funding. And that's a program that, just like intensive care, we find, we go into the prisons after somebody has been locked up either for a situation that involved an overdose, and there was another crime associated with it, or we found them in the prison, and through our, our immediate screening, we're able to find them and get them out of prison and into a structured program of simply showing up. Showing up to treatment, showing up to court, showing up to testing. Something to say, you know what, we know they're not going to get it better in prison. I have ideas about that in the future for a therapeutic, you know, community in our prison. But this was our response at that stage, was to say, hey, let's get them out. Let's give them structured supervision, and let's get them started as a pre-phase to our Drug Treatment Court, which sometimes can take longer. And that's been incredibly successful, and Judge Wall here now is our Presiding Judge of that. We could switch over to Tom, that would have, probably not good at the... And that is the targeted opioid phase, and again, that's a, a pre-phase to Treatment Court. But what it represents to the community, when we're able to reach in and say, you know what, we know prison doesn't work. We know substance use disorders get worse in prison. Let's get them out. Let's connect them with treatment. Let's connect them with structured supervision, and it works. It works. I'm very proud of that program as well. So, all of our programs, next slide. As I said, are made up of multidisciplinary teams. Not everybody's here, but I have representatives of, of, of the teams here. Of course, there's the judge, and, and we have Judge Eisenberg, who is here, who is our Presiding Judge in Veterans Treatment Court. Judge Hillis, the Presiding Judge in Behavioral Health Court, is actually up trying a case, which, which, you know, demonstrates that one thing I have said since I started in 2006, not one extra piece of time in terms of being taken away from our regular dockets, being criminal court, family court, civil court. We do this on our extra time, which I think shows the passion and the commitment of all of our judges to do it. The coordinators are here. I have Anthony, who's the current Coordinator, Anthony Titano of Drug Treatment Court, and really, who I'd like to say is the, you know, the Coordinator Extraordinaire. Now Megan Morrison, who was our, our Drug Treatment Court Coordinator. And with the help of, of Mr. Soltizziak and your government, we actually now have a separate division in our court system of Treatment Courts. And she's now a Deputy Director in the Treatment Courts of, of our county. And that would not have happened if, if, if Lee here didn't see that... And that would not have happened if, if, if Lee here didn't see that how funding structures can actually go for programs so we can begin to track how well do they work? How much are we spending on these programs? Again, from the date I started this program, the district attorney's office has partnered with the court system. The public defender's office is, is, just does an amazing job of screening people and supporting people and being their representative liaison in our treatment courts. We have joined together with the sheriff department. Sergeant Hazard is here. This was an amazing implementation into our team. When you're able to say you have a law enforcement representative on your team, the ones, and he and his team is, is a rapid response team, has literally, when we, somebody has left treatment, he can be, as I call it, zero to 60 into Kensington, looking for that person before the inevitable outcome of what happens as a result of this. And that was an extraordinary addition to all of our treatment courts. We started to collaborate with other, obviously, the county's behavioral hor, behavioral health, the Office of, Department of Veterans Affairs, our community treatment providers, that we have an extraordinary list of community treatment providers, both in our behavioral health and our drug treatment courts. And now we've started with Justice Related Services and the, and the U.S. Department of, of Veterans Affairs. So this is a collaboration that makes these things work. We get to the final couple of screens. These are just if, if, if the public is interested, why they work, I'm not going to go through each one of them. But again, each one of these 10 key components represents a researched, studied data around what works in a criminal justice system, and that these 10 key components, think of them as the 10 evidence-based practices, which is simply why treatment courts have become the most successful intervention of those who suffer mental health and drug and alcohol use disorders ever in the criminal justice system. Because when you have 80% of your people, and we know that the criminal behavior is symptomatic of when they're active in their disorder, and we're able to offer this kind of treatment, these are the reasons of why it works. So, final screen. Again, Joe Inarani, I think we have Pat from the Treatment Court, Eric from Behavioral Health Court. These representatives are here because they are the team that really makes this work. Again, participation in these treatment courts are voluntary, even though it may not feel because you're, they're pretty desperate when they're in prison, and they want to get out. We incentivize, you want to come out? Then you better be prepared to, to, to start, you know, the different, making change for the rest of your life. Lots of eligibility. We, we, we want to keep the community safe while we're saving the community taxpayer dollars. So there are certain screenings for violent crimes and those type of drug dealers that, that, that aren't substance use disorder. Come over to the courthouse any day of the week. Now, it looks like Top's working every Monday through Friday. Behavioral Health Courts on Monday nights. I run Drug Treatment Court on Tuesday nights. Veterans Courts on Thursday morning. And this are all designed to be able to meet the needs of the participants so they can work, so they can go to treatment, so they can make their meetings and the like. And again, we, we communicate through staffings, team members. We're a constant collaboration of meeting the participant where they are in that moment in terms of, of, of where their clinical needs are and where their community supervision needs are. Final screen. So this is what we represent, the Drug Treatment Courts. We publish, you know, probably once a month our fast facts and what's working and what's working. Again, we're, we're trying to get our census up because it was crushed during COVID, but we have capacity built out for 150. I show you the number of graduates. But here's really what I want to finish up with. This is representative of all our treatment courts. So when the commissioners make a decision to invest what is a relatively minuscule amount of money into our treatment courts, when you compare it simply to these studies, and these aren't just made up anymore, we know how much it costs to house somebody in our correctional facility for a year. You start with that facility, and then you add up the price of, okay, even if we're talking about specialized officers and the treatment, it's an extraordinary savings of taxpayer dollars while you're saying to the community, we care. We care about you, and there are other ways to begin to recover from your substance use disorders if you're in the criminal justice system. And again, you know, I've got the, the numbers up there for, you know, the savings that we cause. So we truly do, these courts save lives while saving taxpayer dollars. And that's an important message, and I hope I have conveyed it in my brief period of time, and I thank you.
I want to thank you all for being here and for what you do. But Judge O'Neil, I want to commend you for your singular leadership in 2006 and starting this alone, and we can see what you've built. And I know you always give others credit, and, and others are involved, but 70, 775 lives changed for the better. That's just tremendous. And the 170th graduation, I'll be there next week. I'm proud that Montgomery County is a leader in this, and I can tell you during my remaining time, and I hope future commissioners will continue to support our treatment courts. But thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
I'd like, just like to say, the, the work that you all do is inherently personal to me. I have a brother that deals with substance use disorder, and it really has affected our family in devastating ways. I've been down in Kensington to go look for him, and he's been in and out of treatment. And so I, I know the power of these programs, and we have to really work to de-stigmatize this, this, this disorder. It's just like having cancer or having diabetes. And when we can do that as a community, we can save many lives. So you have a partner in me to ensure that the work that you all do gets supported day in and day out. So thank you for all that you do to support our residents.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you, Judge, and your, and the team for the important work you do. And Judge O'Neil, many years ago and over the years, I've seen you outside of the courthouse at various community functions that help families that suffer, have relatives that suffer with addiction. And you did that on your own time, and I know you're very passionate about this. And you can see over the years how much this has advanced, the results are evidence of it, that you've had great success, and that's a credit to your leadership. So I admire it, and I thank you for what you do.
Community hears your words. If they know that a county commission cares, that's the kind of work they want to see their commissioners doing in the community. Roads, bridges, they're, they're important. They're important everyday life. But those in our community that have less that suffer, that's a beautiful testament to them. So thank you all very much for giving us the time. You've already signed our proclamation, which is important representation of your support. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. And it is also Older Americans Month. Jennifer Barhart, Barnhart, our administrator of the Office of Senior Services is here. Jennifer, welcome.
Good morning, commissioners, county leadership and staff, and members of the public. It's, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you in celebration of Older Americans Month. Currently, there are over 221,000 people over the age of 60 that our office proudly serves through a dedicated team of over 60 employees and in partnership with a network of over 80 community service providers. I'd like to thank them for their year-round service to older adults. This year is the 14th year for the annual centenarian celebration. We have 425 centenarians in Montgomery County. And thanks to Juliana Garner with the Planning Commission, and Heather Skirty from Sletzky Elder Law, over 80 centenarians have submitted bios and pictures to be highlighted throughout the month on the county website. And today I'd like to introduce you to three of those centenarians, starting with Caroline Merrill. Next slide. Caroline is our oldest centenarian at 109 years old and says, I am blessed to still have my health, right state of mind, and a family who loves me. My memories of my hometown of Ardmore are still vivid, and I am blessed to share them with others. When asked what her secret is to a healthy, long life, she says, eat fresh fruits and vegetables, drink plenty of water, laugh as much as you can, and enjoy an apple martini when dining out. Next slide, please. Next, we have Margaret Barrow. Margaret lived in Upper Marion for 62 years and graduated from Upper Marion High School in 1940. She worked for Norristown Water Company in West Conshohocken. Margaret began working for Upper Marion School District in May of 1953 and retired in 1985. At age 94, she moved to Royersford with her daughter, and now Margaret is enjoying a five-generation family of two children, four grandchildren, seven great-grandchildren, and 13 great-great-grandchildren. Next slide, please. Finally, we have Gerald Abbott, who was born in October of 1923 at Montgomery Hospital in Norristown. He grew up in Norristown and graduated from Norristown High School in 1941. In 1943, he was drafted into the U.S. Army and served in the 82nd Airborne Division. And during the Battle of the Bulge, Jerry was trapped behind enemy lines. On his way to Berlin, he witnessed a correction camp liberation. Later, Jerry and his wife Vivian had a daughter, and now they have two grandsons and three Next slide, please. The Senior Games also take place each May at Montgomery County Community College. The mission is to stimulate older adults 50 and over to be active in sports and recreational events in order to maintain physical and mental well-being. These pictures that you see here are from the 2023 Games. From May 1st through May 5th, hundreds of Montgomery County older adults competed in the games. Everything from archery, billiards, darts, horseshoes, pickleball, swimming, tennis, walking, and more. The Senior Games Expo was held on May 5th, and our office participated with an opioid education and alternative pain management exhibit. The exhibit featured massage, yoga, reflexology, Riki, and Tai Chi. Next slide, please. And lastly, I, I wanted to share two upcoming events for the Office of Senior Services. The first is that we're going to be launching SHARE Housing and Resource Exchange Program on June 1st, and that's in collaboration with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging and Montgomery County Family Services. The SHARE Housing and Resource Exchange Program, also known as SHARE, is an affordable housing choice that brings together homeowners who want to share their home with home seekers who are looking for housing in exchange for rent, help around the house, or a combination of both. The home seeker receives their own bedroom and agrees upon use of the common areas. And every arrangement is unique and depends on the needs, preferences, and abilities of the participants involved. Since the program's inception in December, since December of 2017, there have been over 200 matches, including 100 older adults. And Montgomery County is one of 14 counties statewide that's participating. Next slide, please. And the second event that I wanted to mention will occur over the summer months as we answer the call from Governor Shapiro and the PA Secretary of Aging, who, which will be to help the Commonwealth build the Master Plan on Aging and Disability. Pennsylvania is ranked fifth among 50 states by the sheer size of our older adult population at 3.4 million. And Pennsylvania's total older adult population grew from 15.4% in 2010 to 17.8% in 2020. The five core tenets of the Master Plan are going to be transparency and inclusion, embedded diversity, equity, and inclusion, principles of person-centered planning, and creation of a living document that will evolve through the 10-year span. It's, the plan is supposed to reframe how we think about, talk about, and value our older adults and people with disabilities. Montgomery County has one of the largest populations of older adults in the state, and we will be hosting listening sessions throughout the county in the month of July. Next slide, please. And I'd like to close out today's presentation with the contact information of my office and also the website address for the centenarian stories, where you can see over 80 of them if you would like. And I want to thank you so much for your time and your attention today.
Jennifer, thank you for the report. Thank you for your work. I will confess that I do miss the centenarian luncheon each year. It was always so much fun to actually be in the room and, and do that. I would always ask for tips on how I can make the 100, and my, the best one was pay your taxes and cut your lawn. So I'm paying my taxes, I'm not cutting my lawn, but, but thank you, and please thank your, your office as well, your team as well.
Thank you. And I'd like the tip of an apple martini, but my grandmother's 103 years old and lives in Montgomery County, so I certainly understand and value our older adults, especially those that have lived and seen so many things in this country. So thank you for honoring those older, older adults.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I echo the remarks of my colleagues, and also like to thank you for helping protect and serve the senior citizens in Montgomery County because they deserve it. After many years of positive contributions to society in so many fronts, they need to be cherished, and they shape the, the world we live in today. So the work you do is, are important and appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Before we move on to public comment, I want to acknowledge the presence of our controller, Karen Sanchez. And with that, we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on the agenda.
I have objection.
Please state the nature of your objection.
I had to leave early last time, but I understand that you were cutting people off, the ones on Zoom, and you cut off a lot of people even in here. We have a full two minutes. You should not interrupt us, and if you do, you should pause the clock and then restart it.
Objection is noted. Thank you very much.
Oh, I hope you actually take it to heart, not just note it.
I have objection.
Please state the nature of your objection.
Giuseppe Monticelli, Conshohocken, Springfield. Nature of the objection is, kind people off, two minutes? We need the five minutes. That's the nature of my objection.
Noted. Thank you. Ms. Harris?
We have four people for agenda comments, and the first one is Jenny, Jenny Reiman-Schneider.
Thank you, Jennifer. I have confidence that under your leadership, these things are going to improve for seniors. My name is Jenny Reiman-Schneider from Lower Providence Township. I'm going to talk a little bit. I appreciate all the work you're doing. I want to talk a little bit about the darker side. You've all heard me here before. And the guy that was talking before, and I apologize, I don't recognize his name, the judge, I agree, we don't just incarcerate people, we try to give them options. However, we do incarcerate older adults. My mother spent 84 years of her life raising four children, doing a tremendous amount of community service, running a literacy program for decades, and when she started to fail, the system failed her terribly. She was incarcerated in a facility with no transition time, no ability to go home and get as much as a comb, put under this horrible system that I'm working statewide and nationwide to reform called guardianship, whereby a person actually owns another human being. This person doesn't need to know the other person. This person doesn't have to speak to the other person. This person doesn't have to make sure the other person is living properly. They can just decide, the person can get taken away from their life with a very cursory review of their background and their history, determine that they think that they're not living properly, and stick them with a county judge's blessing in a facility, and after which never anyone from the county has ever followed up to see what my mother is dealing with, how my mother is living, or respond other than Jennifer, which took me months to get in touch with her. Everybody else ignored me for over, probably close to a year, to, to determine how to better handle people's needs when they get to a point where they are unable to do everything for themselves. We need serious reform to this system. We need serious funding to help these people when they need help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Giuseppe Monticelli. It's going to be Conshohocken and Springfield. I'm going to be very mindful of my time, and thank you for this new timer, as this helps out greatly for people who are visually impaired. I want to speak about J1, which is going to be a bid for drudging services at Greenland Park. You know, Greenland Park, just like what Ms. Pauline Brosio has been saying for the past couple of meetings, you know, I went by there myself. It, it's definitely accessible. It's definitely not good. So I'm very happy to see this agenda item, and I would highly urge all commissioners, all voting commissioners, to go ahead and vote in the affirmative for this action of this. this advertisement of bids and RFPs. I'm going to speak about K1 here, which is going to be a contract award for communications. Thanks to one of your county employees, I was able to ascertain more information before speaking because I thought this was about 911 communications, but it's not. It's about creative services and, you know, doing your logo and stuff and stuff. I, I would just highly recommend that you want to be going with people from Florida, New York, Virginia. Try and keep it within PA, especially, was this ID, Idaho, especially Idaho. You got to keep it within local, small businesses. Small Business Monday. Let's, let's, let's do small businesses. Try and award contracts to small businesses. That's what I would say there. And I want to speak quickly with the election board. That's just for the challenges. How about for certifying the vote? Do you guys know the date for that? Thank you.
Next, we have Pauline Brachio.
Good morning, Pauline Brachio, Townes and Township. I would just really quick like to say that I do not think that drug addiction is the same as diabetes. I'm diabetic, I'm also asthmatic, and neither of those two things make me want to go out and kill people or rob people or anything else like that. I don't go out and commit crimes just because I'm diabetic or asthmatic. So, I think that there has to be a stricter way of defining that because to say that drug addiction is the same affliction as any other disease is just isn't right. And also, I would have liked to know if Judge O'Neill could have said, how many of that 775 people who graduated are still under control, their own control, if they're still living their lives drug-free? We didn't get that answer. This is still Mental Health Month, and we do have a mental health department and a health department in this county. And I'm going to go back to when I said less about transgendering children. That is-
This is, this is general, this is agenda comment? If you want to raise issues during general public comment, you certainly are free to do so.
Okay, well, health awareness, that was last, on the last, we, last meeting's agenda.
On this agenda.
Okay, all right, then. Then I'm just going to keep on going with the drug addiction thing. I don't believe that, the other question is, if somebody commits murder and they have a drug addiction, do they get out of jail too? Where do they draw the line on violent crimes? They do?
Yeah, they do.
Okay, thank you, Giuseppe, because they're not answering anything. Yeah, I, I have a real big problem with people getting out of jail when they've committed murder. Life is life. Thank you.
Next, we have David Morgan.
David Morgan of Ambler. I'm talking about J2 RFP, about an online public engagement portal. So, public engagement is very important, and I'm not sure it has to be paid for an expenditure because, as Judge O'Neill went out to meetings and has said in Point 10 of his presentation about how there are community meetings about updating the public. So, if there are projects, such as we saw in the reporter this week, the Justice Center with a beam laying, we know this is a historic project, but we have a dearth of town halls about this. Why not just have more public information given out? I noticed in the article, it said that Commissioner Lawrence, she said, there's a long way to go in this project. So, we know that we've had in the 400 millions, I claim it's 455 million, my last figures, and then we have projected 600-plus million. So, this project should be better defined. We have dimensions of 322,000 square feet. The square root of that is 568 feet. So, if you go out there and look, it's more than a football long, football field long, and going backwards, same thing. So, how, there's 18 courtrooms to be fit in this structure. Almost seems that all 18 could fit on one floor. Look at this building, this room here. Also, there's a drawing called New Justice Center Construction in a website on May 16th came out. And you'll see a picture, and you'll see the workers are so small in that picture that maybe five of these floors could be for housing homeless. Or perhaps we're missing an opportunity with 18 West Mount Aerie, 18 West Aerie Street down here, that that could be renovated for homeless. Perhaps this building could be considered if we can move more services for security across to that large-
Your two minutes are a highly costly building.
We have four people for general public comment. The first person is Jenny Ryman Schneider.
Jenny Ryman Schneider, Lower Providence Township. I was going to continue with what I was talking about. So, again, I really would like an overhaul of the way that this county treats our seniors and taking a better view of what we can do to make them more capable of maintaining their comfortable life in their home. It may sometimes require more work than others, but removing them at the approval of county employees who do not know the background and did not take enough time to really get to know them or their family, or the legally required less alternative restrictions, which are written into Pennsylvania law already but ignored, has been a great detriment to my mother. We reached out to the county for help. We knew that we were struggling. We knew we weren't handling everything that we needed to in the best way we could because we were so overwhelmed, and their answer was to just abruptly, and I mean abruptly, from the courthouse stairs, take her, shove her in a car and shove her in a facility. This is wrong. Anybody involved in this should be looked at and should not be able to work with seniors. This is just wrong, okay? There are other options, and I, when you said Slutsky Elder Law, I had to hold myself onto my chair because a lot of these people that claim to care about these older people, they basically just want to keep them in the court system. We're coming up on our fourth court date to just try to maintain my mother's, our ability to access our own mother and take care of our own mother, who's still in a facility that we don't want her in and who has not received 24-hour care. These are just a couple of her injuries that I've shown you before, her eye not being taken care of, a head injury. You can see it's, her head's red, her hair's red, her hair's whiter than mine, blood not taken to the emergency room, not given a head X-ray, nothing. Thank you.
Next, we have Giuseppe Monticelli.
Giuseppe Crini Monticelli, Concha Hocken Borough and Springfield Township. I'd like to touch base on last meeting and finish up my comments so they can't be miscreed for anything else. I get to see Commissioner Weiner on YouTube with those YouTube ads and the extremism. My question would be, is Mako Mama extremist? Because to my knowledge, you know, the way that you describe it seems like that they are, but allegedly. I want to talk about that dredging. I would love for a plan to be set in place here of where every five years, you're having to do dredging over by Greenland Park. But it's just not Greenland Park, guys. How about Hillcrest in Springfield Township? You know, on Montgomery Avenue there, you know, in Erdenheim, that, you know, I don't know who's responsible for that. I know the township does take good care, but is that something that the county is in control of? I want to talk about the signage, still having a signage problem. You know, Valerie's name is still up. We have, you know, Josh Shapiro's name on these signs on the trails and from the Willow Grove Annex. I would like for those to be changed. I first came to these meetings in August of 2019, and then I said, I voted for you, Joe. This time around, since I've watched the last four years, I got to see the true you. So, take that with a grain of salt. Thank you.
Next, we have David Morgan.
David Morgan of Ambler. I have the concern about last meeting on the agenda was mentioned as Mental Health Awareness Month. So, there are some good things that happened from that. We had the speaking with others' awareness to become more social rather than being on social media, to get out in nature, walk around, it's great. And today, another plus was having the foster care presentation because foster care is wonderful for children. But I was concerned that the comments from people taking the time to call in about the trans issue and the care of children, their mental health were interrupted many times and discouraging participation in these meetings. So, I think that you should really, really consider that maybe try to invite people back who were discouraged last time. There is the role of the county in health choices as a program of the county, a program that's been started with the state government, and the county's supposed to be involved with their public health department. So, these issues which parents bring up, county really has responsibility for having positive direction for the children. I mentioned also about adoption and the beauty of motherhood, but there was practically nothing about motherhood or Mother's Day in the last agenda. So, it's a wonderful gift, of course, we all are indebted to. And mothers I know who have seen their children grow up, mothers who have given their children up for adoption and met the children as their adults and seen the blessing of that wonderful thing. So, let's try to put that in next time and value life. We know that each unborn child, by the eighth week, has fingers and toes and then, before then, legs and arms. So, they're just valuable for our lives to safeguard life.
And last for comments in the room, we have Pauline Brachio.
Hello, Pauline Brachio, Townes and Township. I do want to go back to the county health department and mental health department. There is, this is still in the Mental Health Awareness Month, and the transgender issue has really gotten out of hand. It's very interesting that Sweden, who started this whole thing with transgender surgeries, have now banned any kind of process for anyone under 18 in their country.
Brachio, you're aware that you need to keep your comments germane to matters before the county commissioners or that may come before the county commissioners?
No, well, I'm suggesting it. Stop interrupting me. You're very rude. We only have two minutes, and I want five seconds back. Enough. So, anyway, since CHOP was able to teach teachers in elementary schools that, how to speak to children to transgender, I think that the mental health department in Montgomery County should also go into the schools and teach teachers on how to shut their mouths and mind their business and stop talking to children about gender identity. This is absolutely insane. What happens to a person's body when they start getting puberty blockers is that they don't go through puberty, and no matter how old you get, you can't ever get that back, even if you stop the treatment. So, and then the surgery, these people are not able to function as adults at all after that.
Limit to issues or items for the commissioners.
So, the germane means anything to the county, and this is county, I'm talking about the county mental health department. If they cannot get on board and straighten this out somehow with the teachers in these schools, this is child abuse, okay? I'm talking, you have children, all of you have children except for Joe. You don't know what those teachers are saying to your children. Not even the school boards are aware of what the teachers are saying.
Brachio, your time is up.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, we're done? Public comment, is anyone online?
We have one person online for public comment. Tara House, Tara House Seal, you can unmute.
Good morning, this is Tara House Seal from Lower Potsgrove. I tried to join the meeting earlier this morning and the microphone was off, so I missed all of the public speakers that you guys had in person today. I would like to say thank you to all the people who attended the board meeting in person. Thank you for bringing attention to our elderly who have aged so gracefully. And I don't understand why this one woman, I'm so sorry, she made a comment earlier and I don't remember her name, but the situation hasn't been rectified. The town, the county can't help her with her mother. And I think that the three of you could get together and help this woman with her mom that is needing help. I agree with Patricia that there is a mental health crisis in our public schools with our children and providing them litter boxes to go to the bathroom and letting them go to restrooms that don't go with their body parts. I think that's inappropriate. I think the lack of the word appropriate and inappropriate is astounding that teachers aren't allowed to correct children-
Ms. Seal, I'm going to have to ask you to keep your comments.
The playground and going to the bathroom. There's appropriate and inappropriate, and that's a mental health issue, I think. Thank you very much.
That concludes the public comment.
All right. We will move on with the approval of the minutes of the May 4th meeting. I will make a motion to approve the May 4th, 2023 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
No, second vote.
Second by Commissioner Weiner, is an immediate board comment. Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Minutes are approved. Resolutions. Ms. Ann Levitt Gruberger, talk about our 2040 program.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm just waiting for my presentation to pop up on the screen, but I am here to go over the Mako 2040 Implementation Grant Awards for 2023. Sure. Well, we'll just talk. This year, we had 25 applicants to the implementation grant program, and, oh, great. Do you have, you do it? All right. Next slide. So, as you can see, we have made a lot of progress in awarding grants over the last eight years. This is going to be our eighth year of funding, and as you can see, we have provided funds to support programs and projects across the county. They range from new park equipment, new sidewalks, we've had murals installed, we've had a fabulous community garden pop up in Ambler, and we have, as you can see, the yellow stars are actually representing the applications that we received this year. The projects are spread out across the county and continue to be, and we continue to see the creativity and enthusiasm for implementing the county's comprehensive plan through local projects on the ground. Next slide. So, each year, we evaluate the projects submitted to us by looking at the potential impacts that the projects might have locally. We look at the benefits that the projects will have on our local communities, the ability for these projects to transform the local surroundings. We look at the longevity of the project as well as how visible it might be to the municipality or even beyond those boundaries. Next slide. We also look at how these projects relate to our county plans and other local plans that are being implemented. We look at diversity, equity, and inclusion to see how these projects might enhance local efforts to increase diversity and to reach out to the public. And we look at funding as well, if the municipalities are able to provide the correct local match and if they have other funding sources in line to- and if they have other funding sources in line to pay for this project. Next slide. So this year, again, as I mentioned, we had 25 applications for a total of just over 3.7 million in requests. We have a 2.5 million annual funding cap with a maximum grant amount of $200,000. We are recommending 15 projects for funding at this time. I'll mention that our focus category of Walk and Bike MACHA, which relates back to two of our plans here at the Planning Commission, they continue to be very popular, a lot of municipalities are looking to make connections to local trails or build a new bike lane. And it's great that this continues to be a popular focus category. We are recommending 10 projects not be funded at this time and, you know, for a variety of reasons, three projects are from municipalities that submitted two applications, we can only fund one project per municipality. Some projects aren't quite ready to go and some just didn't qualify for the grant funds or may do better with a different grant program. So with that, I will move on to quickly going over what we are recommending for approval. Appington's Master Bicycle Plan is receiving $79,847 to continue implementing this local plan. They will be installing 6.68 miles of bike infrastructure, including signage and road markings. Next slide. Cheltenham Township is going to be receiving $200,000 for a new traffic signal at the intersection of New Second Street and Tucany Creek Parkway to continue their work as part of the Tucany Creek Trail. Next. Collegeville Borough is receiving $72,000 for the Creekside Park Boat Ramp Project. This is an ongoing project in the borough to develop a park adjacent to the Perkyomen Creek with access to the creek for canoeing, kayaking, and paddle boarding. The Perkyomen Watershed Conservancy is a partner in this project and has recently installed the boat ramp that is a part of this park. Next slide. Green Lane Borough is receiving $169,997 for the Route 29 pedestrian lighting project. These will be pedestrian scaled street lamps to complement the project they are in the middle of to install new sidewalks along this portion of Route 29. The borough was really looking to capitalize on their proximity to the nearby trail system. Next slide. Jenkentown is receiving $52,000 for the Old York Road Traffic Calming and Walkability Plan Implementation Project. The borough is very concerned about the traffic along Old York Road and the safety of the pedestrians that are either living in or visiting the borough. This project will include signage as well as traffic calming initiatives like rumble strips along the road. Next slide. Lower Frederick Township will be receiving $200,000 to build sidewalks along Spring Mount Road between the township building and the fire station, the Lower Frederick Black Company, as well as replacing Extreme Culvert under the road line. Next slide. Lower Marion Township will be receiving $150,000 toward a expansion of the Indigo Bike Share Program. If you are a visitor to Philadelphia and you see these blue bikes parked along the side of the road, that is what you can expect to see coming to Lower Marion Township. This will be the program's first expansion outside of the city and this is a project being undertaken in partnership with the City Avenue Special Services District. Lower Moreland Township is receiving $200,000 for the Byberry Road Sidewalk Gaps Project. The township seeks to install 1,225 feet of sidewalk to fill gaps along the road. This will allow safer access to not just the local trail system, but the Pennyback Trail as well. Next slide. Royersford Borough will be receiving $126,720 to install solar powered lighting across the pedestrian bridge, the Strussel Bridge, which obviously that is not a new picture, but is a bridge that is also being renovated as part of a large trail project to connect Royersford to Spring City Borough. Springfield Township will be receiving $200,000 to acquire open space along Hawes Lane. This will allow the township to acquire 2.76 acres along Hawes Lane in Flower Town to preserve the most mature trees and woodlands in this parcel. Next. Towneson Township will be receiving $200,000 towards the Lycle Road Improvements Project. This will be a sidewalk and stormwater based project that will provide new sidewalk connection between North Penn High School and the township's swim pool facility. And it will also work to, I guess, ameliorate some of the localized flooding conditions that happen there during heavier storms. Next slide. Upper Hanover Township will be receiving $200,000 towards the Macoby Run Neighborhood Park Pickleball Courts. This will allow the township to construct six pickleball courts at Macoby Run Park, which also features a tot lot, a looped walking trail, a picnic pavilion, and multi-purpose grass area. Next. Upper Marion Township will be receiving $200,000 toward the First Avenue Linear Park Lighting Project. This is an ongoing project for Lower Marion Township in partnership with the King of Prussia Business Improvement District to create a road diet and linear park along First Avenue. This, these ones will go to adding 66 solar powered lamps, light poles, and concrete foundations along First Avenue. Next. In Upper Pots Grove Township, $200,000 will be awarded towards work at Holland Back Park. This will begin implementation of the master plan for the 23 acre park, which will allow the township to proceed with constructing a one mile stone dust loop trail around the park. And last but not least, in White Marsh Township, the township will be receiving $200,000 toward the Wells Street Parking Lot. This will be a connection to the Cedar Grove Road, the Cedar Grove Park across the street, but also will allow for safer off-road parking for the open space that the township owns along Wells Street. There are passive recreation opportunities and trails there on that parcel. That's it.
All right. I will get a motion on the table. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into grant agreements with appropriate municipal officials to fund the programs listed on the attached exhibits under the conditions specified for each grant. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Dan, thank you for the presentation. I'm going to thank the selection committee for all the hard work. I know that we have a lot of volunteers, put in a lot of time to do these, and I also want to commend that these are countywide projects, that we are touching a lot of different municipalities and a lot of different places, so thank you for all the work. I intend to vote in favor.
Yeah, thank you and the team for all the work.
Thank you, Ann. I know the review process was significant through all this, and as Commissioner Lawrence said, it's geographically well balanced. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. We will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Authorization of TEFRA approval for Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School. Mr. Stein.
Yes, a request under the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982 coming from the Horsham Industrial and Commercial Development Authority. On behalf of Gwinnett Mercy Academy, they are seeking to issue $17 million worth of bonds for the property on Sunday Town Pike in Lower Gwinnett Township. The funds will be used to pay down previous bond debt as well as to finance certain construction and expansion projects on the property. And as always with these approvals, it does not create any obligation on the county.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby approve the project for Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School as described in this resolution and approve the issuance of bonds by the Horsham Industrial and Commercial Development Authority for financing of the project. Further resolved that the approvals and declarations in this resolution shall in no way pledge or otherwise obligate the credit or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for the payment of principal of, or interest or premium, if any, on any obligations issued to finance the project, nor shall the county have any obligation or liability whatsoever with respect to the project. This resolution shall take effect on the date of adoption hereof. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. We have a vacancy on our Montgomery County Housing Authority and I will move that Carol Steinhofer be appointed to the Montgomery County Housing Authority for a term to begin immediately and to expire on May 18th, 2028, and to serve at the pleasure of the county commissioners and in accordance with the current duly adopted bylaws. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. To our personnel for the list for the day, Ms. Calder.
You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioners Department's Personnel List. It is a three-page document dated Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, with a timestamp of 12:00 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
I move to approve the May 18th, 2023 Personnel Presentation as given by First Assistant Solicitor Maureen Calder and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes, and I am now going to do the Way to Go MACHA for April and May. The Way to Go MACHA program is open to all county employees, encouraging them to nominate their colleagues for going above and beyond. Today, more than 170 county employees have submitted nominations, singing the praises of their coworkers. Each month, we draw employees from the list of nominations and each wins $150 after taxes in their paycheck in recognition of their work. So since we missed reporting last month, I'm pleased to announce the following winners for April and May. Louis Collins is a Technology Systems Specialist in the Department of Public Safety. Louis goes well above and beyond the call of duty. He often comes in early and stays late and has a positive attitude that is infectious. Bob Clark is a Park Ranger with our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Division. Bob helped our region attain a new electric bicycle. He did the research and went to a few local bike vendors to find what we were looking for at a great price. Michael Gonzalez is an accounting tech with our Early Learning Resource Center. Michael has stepped in as a Spanish interpreter, translator for ELRC in addition to his tasks as an accounting tech. With his knowledge of the ELRC program and his language skills, Michael has warmly explained the ELRC program, translated client needs to the childcare specialist and more. Sarah Peening is an absentee coordinator with Motor Services. Sarah is a rock star. She is hardworking, organized, highly driven, and a crucial member of Mail and Elections' Operations Team. She always delivers the best service to our constituents with kindness and efficiency, which has been recognized by residents many times. So congratulations to our April winners and now our May winners. Patricia Benedict is an office support staff member for adult probation. Pat is a positive light in our department. She's a team member who's always there to lend a helping hand for whatever is needed. It's a pleasure to call her friend and coworker. Bernard Enright, also known as BJ, is a Park Ranger with our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites Division. BJ has been a great example of what a Park Ranger should be. Since transferring to my region, he has kept and maintained a level head when dealing with the public. I cannot ask for a more dedicated employee. Tamara Thurlowski is a Community Information Content Manager with the Department of Health and Human Services. Tammy is an innovator and a leader. She has repeatedly exceeded expectations for informing our residents across multiple media types, including video, social media, and pamphlets. And last but not least, Megan Heikley is the deputy coroner in the coroner's office. Megan joined the Suicide Prevention Task Force out of a kindness of her heart to make sure all families grieving a loved one by suicide have all the resources they need to process the devastating loss. Megan has also achieved key professional certifications and we are so proud of her. So congratulations to all of the winners. We'll be reaching out to you by email with more details. And as a reminder to our employees, nominations remain open. You can visit the employee corner to fill out the nomination form. And now we will move on to the advertisements of bids and RFPs. Ms. O'Malley.
Yes. We have a bid on behalf of assets and infrastructure for dredging services at Green Lane Park. The successful responder will provide maintenance dredging of the Deep Creek Lake at Green Lane Park to remove accumulated sediment. Contract will be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Two, RFP on behalf of the Planning Commission for an online public engagement portal for projects. The successful responder will provide an online public engagement platform for ongoing comprehensive plan work and other county planning commission projects. Contract will be awarded to the highest rated responder. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.machap.org/purchasing.
I'll move to approve the preceding request for advertisement of an RFP and a bid as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Words of contract.
One, contract award communications, communication services, multiple providers. Contract provides for marketing and public relations services for the purpose of educating and informing the public on the county's programs and services. RFP 2321 was viewed by 116 providers with 25 responses received. As needed, contracts will be for a term of one year with four optional annual renewals. Contracts are awarded to the highest rated responders. Provider list of 21 entities listed in the back of the room. Two, contract award district attorney criminal investigation training, LexisNexis Risk Solutions of Alpharetta, Georgia, $30,000. Contract provides for comprehensive investigative training for the evidentiary value of call detail records and geolocation data. Training is proprietary. Three, contract award information and technology solutions, maintenance and support. Lightspeed IS Incorporated of Woodbury, Minnesota, $40,381. Contract provides for maintenance and support services for data storage systems and network switches. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract. Four, contract award public safety disaster debris management clearance and removal services, multiple providers, no cost. Contract provides for a list of qualified on-call disaster debris management clearance and removal services providers. RFP 2263 was viewed by 28 providers with six responses received. Contracts are awarded to the highest rated responders. Contracts are awarded to Cirrus Environmental Services Incorporated, Sarasota, Florida; DRC Emergency Services LLC of Galveston, Texas; Ashford Incorporated of Deerfield Beach, Florida. Contracts are for a period of three years with two optional annual renewal terms. Five, contract award public safety service grants, multiple providers, $40,063.42. Contracts provide for the distribution of grant funding for approved ambulance projects coordinated by the Emergency Medical Services Division. Funds received through a Pennsylvania Department of Health grant to county's Department of Public Safety Emergency Medical Services. County solicited applications from all county emergency medical services providers. Responses were reviewed and approved by the County Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Awarded grantees are Bryn Athan Fire Company Ambulance, Friendship H L H Ambulance Incorporated, Goodville Steam Engine Number One Ambulance, Carleysville Area EMS, Horsham Fire Company Ambulance, Lower Providence Community Center Ambulance, Plymouth Community Ambulance, Second Alarm Rescue Squad, Skipback Emergency Medical Services, Upper Marion Township Fire and EMS, Upper Perkyon Valley Ambulance, VMSC of Lower Marion and Norbert, and Volunteer Medical Services Court Lansdale. Six, contract amendment assets and infrastructure engineering, Bridge 56 in Cheltenham Township, Whitney Bailey Cox and McNanny LLC of Wayne, PA, $7,000. Original contract provided for an engineering firm to perform the required engineering, environmental permitting, and construction consultation for the replacement of County Bridge 56 at Rice's Mill Road over branch of Tacony Creek in Cheltenham Township. Amendment provides for additional drilling costs to determine proper structural foundation requirements. Seven, contract amendment district attorney services and supplies, Boat Cell Mark Forensics Incorporated of Lurton, Virginia, $31,000. Original contract provided for testing services and supplies for the Rapid DNA unit for a three-year term. Amendment provides for a seven-month continuation of the contract through December 2023. Services and supplies are proprietary. Eight, reimbursement agreement assets and infrastructure, Keim Street Bridge Replacing Project PennDOT, $187,500. Authorization request for agreement between PennDOT and Montgomery County provides for a funding agreement reimbursing the county for the bridge number 190 Keim Street over Schuylkill River in Pottstown Borough. Agreement allows for the reimbursement to the county for final design activities and right-of-way negotiation costs. Reimbursement agreement provides for 95% reimbursement to the county. There are three contracts, six contract renewals, and six amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and the back of the room.
I'll move to approve the preceding words of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Motion passes. Motion passes. Words of contract assets and infrastructure major construction projects.
One, contract amendment assets and infrastructure instruction Donald E. Risinger Incorporated of Westchester, PA, $1,247.72. Original contract provides for Phase 1 renovations to the Milk House Building at the Norristown Farm Park. Amendment provides for the cost calculation of the final adders and deducts required to close out the project.
I'll move to approve the preceding awards of con, the preceding award of contract as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
No, second, Beth.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? We'll move on to the vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. Southeast PA Regional Task Force.
One, contract award communications equipment Raven Electronics Corporation of Reno, Nevada, $27,928.10. Contract provides for interoperable communication equipment to replace the current SECOM system with updated equipment for the five regional counties. Equipment is sole source. Two, contract renewal web hosting services EBA Engineering Incorporated of Laurel, Maryland, $66,175. Contract provides for IT hosting and support services to the Philadelphia Office of Emergency Management. Services are available through a PA CoStarz contract.
I'll move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer Barbara O'Malley and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
No, second, Beth.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. For closing commissioner comments, as Ms. O'Malley is still there, I do want to acknowledge, since it was mentioned earlier, that it was the Montgomery County Senior Games. Ms. O'Malley is an award winner for walking. She's not wearing her medal today. I think it's the first time she's taken it off since then. But we want to commend you for your competing and winning, Ms. O'Malley.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, let's give her a round of applause. Any other closing commissioner comments? All right, hearing none. Upcoming meetings, our next Board of Commissioners meeting is June 1st, 2023. If necessary, we will have an election board meeting on Wednesday, May 24th at 12:00 p.m. And I will make a motion to adjourn the May 18th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
No, second, Beth.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. And we will move on to the Salary Board and welcome our controller, Karen Sanchez, to the table.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris, do we have any public comment on Salary Board? All right, and we will move on to our presentation by First Assistant Solicitor Maureen Calder, who's moved up front here.
Thank you. Members of Salary Board, you should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board List. It is a three-page document dated Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, with a timestamp of 12:00 p.m. Of note, we have one employee retiring, Stanley Sarnasinski. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the May 18th, 2023 Salary Board Presentation as given by First Assistant Solicitor Maureen Calder and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
I move.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
No, second, Beth.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Any negative votes? Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn the May 18th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
I'm sorry, I think we have one person to speak on our retiree.
Okay, all right.
I apologize.
That's fine. Okay, I did.
Joe, you can unmute now.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge Stan Sarnasinski and thank him for his service to Montgomery County. Stan's been a fixture at the courthouse for 18 years now. Stan always has a smile on his face, quick wit, and kind words for his fellow employees throughout the many departments that he serves. We're going to have a hard time replacing his friendly disposition and his high level of service. Although Stan's retiring, finally, I might add, he will not be slowing down. In addition to spending more time with his family, he'll be continuing to volunteer his time to the community. Those who know Stan are aware of his dedication to the organizations that he is involved. Stan, you will be missed. And on behalf of the Purchasing Department, I would like to extend our best wishes to Stan and his, and his retirement. So thank you, Stan.
Joe, thank you for coming on, and we all wish Stan the best as well. He's been a good employee for a lot of years.
I'd like to also just take a moment to thank Stan for his 18 years of service in Montgomery County. I happen to know Stan for a long time and his family, and he's a great man. And a lot of the service he did as a county employee sometimes goes unnoticed, but as a store room supervisor in the purchasing department, he played an important role here at the courthouse. And I wish him a great retirement. It's well deserved, and nothing but the best. So thank you for all your service, Stan.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn the May 18th, 2023 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board.
So moved.
Moved by Controller Sanchez. Is there a second?
No, second, Beth.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Is there any board comment? Hearing none will move on to a vote. Meeting is adjourned.